...of the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody, for coming tonight, I appreciate it. Before I ask for approval of the agenda, is there anything that needs to be pulled from the consent agenda and added to the agenda?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the agenda as presented with the following amendments. Add item E4C, consider approval of list number five, students requesting medical exemption from former out learning.
Motion made by Laura and seconded by Dana, all approved, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion period. Okay, anything from delegation, public comments outside, thank you. Okay, we need recognition of the Crystal Apple finalist.
Good evening, I have three, four.
I know we're supposed to be somewhere.
Yes. Yeah. Hi, I'm Roy Sess, I'm the chairman of the Crystal Apple Committee, I've been the chair for eighteen years, Micah Bunch couldn't make it this evening, she has a sick child. I've got five of the six finalists here with me, Alice Hill couldn't make it because she's getting ready for the musical this weekend. So since nineteen ninety-five, the Garden City Area Chamber of Commerce Crystal Apple Teacher Recognition Awards Program is a regionally acclaimed countywide event, the Crystal Apple Awards, held during this month of November demonstrates that the business community is committed to supporting local educators who are preparing our future leaders. Really many thanks goes out to Laura Boers, Boers Law PA, and Cox Communication as the key sponsors for this event. The Community Awareness Recognition Education Committee is made up of representatives of the chamber in the business community. Now, the eligibility for the teachers is early childhood through twelfth grade, certified teachers currently under contract and in good standing with the school and in the classroom, and these are four countywide schools, including Bible Christian Academy, Garden City Public Schools, Hopland Public Schools, Saint Dominic and Saint Mary Catholic Schools. And those teachers are eligible to participate in the Crystal Apple Teacher Recognition Program. Now, teachers may be full-time or part-time, special education counselors or librarians, substitutes and certified support staff personnel such as psychologists, social workers and others are ineligible to participate in this program, as well as former or previous Crystal Apple teachers, they're also ineligible because they've already won the award. The committee sends out nomination forms to the schools and community at the end of March, around mid-March, end of March, and then the deadline is at the end of May, we get those nominations in, we send out an application form out to the teachers, and that deadline is around the end of July, first part of August. So, we have our first committee that goes through a blind read process, and there's three judges that does that, that whittles it down to twelve semifinalists. Then the next round goes to a set of three judges that does an interview process, and then that whittles it down to six, and we take blooms out and surprise them, these people behind me, in their classrooms and congratulating as the finalists for the twenty-twenty Crystal Apple Teachers. Then in the final round, we have three committee members that go out and observe them in their classroom, and this group actually determines who the three Crystal Apple Teachers are for the year. Now, the top three finalists will be named as the twenty-twenty-one Crystal Apple Teachers of Fannie County at the awards banquet that will be held on Thursday, November eighteenth, at the Clarion Inn. The three Crystal Apple Award recipients each receive a certificate, an engraved Crystal Apple, an iPad, a thousand dollar cash award, and the three finalists don't go away empty-handed, they also receive a certificate and a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar award. The six teachers from Garden City Public Schools this year have been named finalists, and they include Trista Bailey from Garden City High School, Elena Billiger, right here, right beside me, from Gertrude Walker Elementary School, Emily Hamlin from Garden City High School, Alice Hill can't be here this evening, Lisa Jewell from GCHI at J.D. Adams Hall, and Laura Walsh from Charles O. Stone's Intermediate Center. So congratulations to those six, we have very outstanding teachers. Each of the committees, it was very hard this year, it took a lot of time, sweat, tears to get to these six teachers, so we do have outstanding teachers, again, it's for all teachers in Fannie County, but this year it's actually six teachers from Garden City Public Schools. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Roy. Thank you for all those.
If I can add, Micah and I presented this weekend about the Crystal Apple Awards, and Pratt is looking at copying us, so, and trying to maybe do this, and they're trying to figure out how to make it work, because they have a smaller school district, Skyline, I think, next to Pratt, and trying to figure out, because I guess there's a big rivalry, and like some of the business will only contribute if it's Skyline, and some will only contribute if it's Pratt, and they won't do it if it's both, is what the conversation was, so we'll see if they're able to make that work, so, but that would be really neat if they could get it going, get a business, the businesses doing it somewhere else, too.
Awesome, and thank you for supporting them. Okay, moving on, building presentation, Kenneth Anderson Middle School.
All right, my name's Brad Hill, I'm the associate principal at Kenneth Anderson. Today, we have the Kenneth Anderson Stuco, I have Mr. Dinkle, the Stuco sponsor, I'm gonna turn it over to him, we have a short video for you guys, and I will let him do the rest of the talking.
Oh gee. Yes, my name is Mr. Dinkle, I am shy, I don't speak a lot, I don't communicate at all. As I look across the board, I'm going, wow, our kids, her kids, his kids, her kids, where's Mark, he's here somewhere, I got his kids. Obviously, I've been doing this a long time, but today, it's not about me and student council, has put together a presentation for you this evening, all the work has been done by the student council, and so I'm now going to turn it over to Jacob Pameter.
I'm scared of talking, speaking, so I'm gonna make this quick. My name is Jacob Pameter, and I'm president of Stuco, I just wanna thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to make this, and I'll let the video speak.
Hi, I'm Aspen, everybody loves me, there's my webpage, these are the vendors' offices. This is the back office, where the office people live. Can we speak to something that I haven't made for this? Here's the nurses' office, he likes to run the ironing. Here's the nurses' council's office. This is the staff's office, look at all the caged plants. This is the sanitizer, this is what I normally make up. Here's the snake and filters class, this is my oven, look at all the students put at work, let's leave them. Where's this student going? Oh, it's the computer booth, they also live up in here, I told, look at all that tech, too much tech, let's go. This is a man, it has arms, he must have to avoid this man, I don't think he's a dog. Here's the sitting little man, fast, look at all the students laughing, he looks a bit like Mr. sitting. He's... Here is the library, it's closed right now, but there's a lot of books in there. This is the airline social studies area. This is the supervisor's office, I bet they're looking like some nice. This is the supervisor's class, he keeps the airline, all the students have been at me. She's one of the Apple Awards, I think it's important to help her, 'cause I'm a dog. Adrian, plants, cool, hi! Here's the woodworking room, and this is the art room, look at all those bright colors, people drawing, I think, I think they're bright colors, I can't really see them, color when you have colors. This is the cafeteria, it always smells good, look at those kids, I bet they use a cup first. And then here's picking the snacks, this is the box field, they cook and they write about the things they cook. This is the breakfast, there's no one in it, a bad thing. This is choir and orchestra, they got piped it up, you can hear them singing from outside of your hallway. It's the bedroom, they're building that, but you know, they always have the baked ham. This is the kitchen, they have beaking and the bush, I can't do it, you're lying, are you? I'm tired, I'm gonna let the fences run, but other cookies are going to be displayed.
This is our school's cheer team, they cheer at all, our home college, football and basketball. And this is our volleyball team.
This is our medical school. This is one of the Stuco trips going on to Dodge City.
This is track and field, it takes place during the spring. Here's our soccer team, we have boys and girls soccer. This is our robotics team.
This is our basketball team.
Here is football. We have choir. Cross-country as well. We have a seventh, eighth, and jazz band. Here's our orchestra. Those are three of our award winners from last year. Here's our wrestling team, that's going on now. This is Halo, it's one of our clubs after school. This is Abbott.
I'm back. This is step one of my thing, with all those we wanted to, we will no longer be the tenth and fifth, we will be the tenth and fifth, what is?
And in addition to the activities you saw, we didn't have pictures for them, but for the first time this year, we are having a girls' wrestling team, a scholars' pool, and an after-school.
Again, the students put this all together, I hope you enjoyed it. Resist is our anti-tobacco group, used to be sad that it was such a downer here, the sad students are meeting today, so is Resist, and it's to help promote anti-tobacco use in our schools, they've already made a trip to Florence Wilson, went to Florence Wilson and presented all day. This student council has been very active already this year, we went to Dodge City for the regional Stuco conference back in September, we hosted the booth at Booth the Zoo, we've got the board meeting tonight, this Saturday, we're marching in Veterans Day Parade, just in November, plus we're doing the fifteenth annual Travis McQuaid Memorial Stunt, this is the fifteenth year we've done it every year, and it's a big thing, several students from Kenneth Anderson have actually gone into the military out of Kenneth Anderson, including my son, he's never served overseas during the holidays, but I know how important it is, so it's just giving the kids in our school an opportunity to get that. Next month, we are involved in a holiday parade, so that's just this year, this semester, they've got big plans next semester. Again, we think, well, we're inviting us out tonight, I'm gonna let them each come by one at a time and introduce themselves, some of them are kinda shy, you never know it from having them in class, so, let's go ahead and introduce them.
Mr. Dinkle, before, we might have a couple of questions or comments up here, if we could go ahead and do that, some comments.
Good job speaking, did you guys put Jacob up tonight, he said he didn't like to talk with speech. Well done, thanks, and thanks for having me, thanks for your parents bringing you tonight, I know it can be a little intimidating to come here, but you're falcons, right?
Right, as Glenda recalls, we are still falcon-awful.
How's that, how long did it take for that presentation, the videos we put together, by you guys?
The video took about, I think, a week or two, we had other plans to record, so, but it didn't work out, so we had to take a metal pole and start attaching, I read to it and walk around them a quick.
Great cinematography.
I was gonna say, after they introduce themselves, come around and grab a pen and check a hand?
That'd be great. Yeah, what you were talking about, they have built, this is Abby gave advice, she is on a robotics team, and she and another teammate on robotics created a robot to hold an eye phone to drive around, but every time they tried it, it just kinda weirded right, you know, so, couldn't make too many of that damn turns, so, they improvised, that's what we do, a lot, so go ahead.
Let's go all the way around.
You already made an introduction.
I'm Alexis Pike.
I'm Alexis Pike.
This is thirteen of our thirty, the student council this year, my co-sponsor Shirley Creedon was unable to be here tonight, due to health issue, but thank you so much, I can reach you.
And here's the video.
I'm ready.
Best for last, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the page presentation, moving on, we are into the consent agenda. I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, course problem, nope, course problem, that's enough, consent agenda?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the consent agenda as previously amended.
Motion made by Laura, seconded by Jennifer, all the papers, please say aye.
Can we have concession?
Aye. Yes, concession, concession.
No.
I just wanted to highlight on the covenant agreement, and I just wanted to ask this question that I didn't get a chance to ask, how often will we renew the term on that?
So, the term is part of our long-range facilities plan, and it's about a ten-year, about a ten-year cycle, this term will come with a ten-year warranty and a ten-year maintenance program from the installer that's built into the cost, and ten years is pretty standard in the industry.
Okay, on the long-range facilities, then, I felt like we talked about it, but I didn't have a chance to make sure on that, so, thank you.
Just, right.
Get Tom.
Yours is on, Dana, you need to turn yours on, so can you continue, please? Thank you.
Testing.
Well, think about it, that time to get them back, they'll be pros, they'll be pros at it.
No, I was just supporting her, wanting discussion, I don't have anything.
Sorry, I need to jump into a vote, any other discussion? So, consent agenda?
No, I might just say, too, you know, that term has been a longstanding conversation here since the community came into three of those type of fields, and I think I saw the board have very clearly conversation about it was backward memorial state, and I for one, I don't know what are they thinking of these grass, but I can tell you crunch the numbers, it just works out better, make that simple, and safety and all of that, to have these families replaced when they need to be replaced, and when we're able to get the construction work done, so, I sure appreciate they're getting off of that, and that we're able to afford to get that work done.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, all on paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, board calls update.
Twenty-twenty-one graduation rates. All right, each year, we come to you at this time to present to you kind of the update on what our graduation rate looks like year to year, the graduation rate in Kansas is figured by this formula, it's basically when you first enroll as a high school student, the clock starts ticking, and you have four years to complete graduation, and that actually does go all the way till September thirtieth, so that's kind of why we do this now at the beginning of November, because anyone who graduates up till September thirtieth can be included in this count, then we spend the month of October making sure the data is correct, and everyone is counted properly, and sign off on things, and then it becomes official in November. So, this formula is essentially anyone who graduated divided by all the students that came in, in the fall of two thousand seventeen, and then all of the transfers in and out for one reason or another, so that's how we got to the two thousand twenty-one graduation rate. This is a hard and fast formula, it's the same formula that every school in the nation uses to compare graduation numbers, and it's not a perfect system, but it's the best system we got, okay, for an example of the rigidity in this formula, it essentially ends up being the school that a kid enrolls in last counts, so, for instance, Garden City High School this last year, we had a student move in in the first week of May, that student was, had moved to Garden City because they were part of the foster care system and were in the group home that was established in town, one week later, that student turned eighteen, and when you turn eighteen, you're not in the foster system anymore, so since she left the group home, dropped out of school, and counted as a non-graduate towards Garden City High School, even though she had never attended a full day of classes at Garden City High School, we were just the last school that the student enrolled in, so it's not a perfect system by any means, but it's one where everyone is kind of counted and measured the same way, so the formula applies to everybody. We've got a lot of things going for us and against us, some factors that every year we talk about influencing our graduation rate, we do have a very migratory population in Garden City, we have a lot of kids that come and go, and have gaps in their schooling, and, you know, the clock doesn't stop ticking, it's four years, it doesn't matter if there's a gap in the learning in there or not, it's four years from the time they first enrolled in a high school somewhere. Of course, all of our languages in our ELL population also figure into things, you know, sometimes, some of the students that we might get, that might be part of a refugee organization or come to Garden City for different reasons, may have huge gaps in their schooling, but four years, you've got four years to meet the requirements, we sometimes have kids that haven't been to school in two years, three years, four years, more years, but when they land at Garden City High School, if it's the first time they've enrolled in school, we have four years, sometimes they have enrolled in another school, then taken a gap for a couple of years, and then they come to Garden City High School, and, oh, the clock started ticking a couple of years ago, so, we've got some... So we've got some things that go that we're we working, you know, it's work against us that we work with. But we've got a lot of things that work in our favor too, and a lot of things that you as a board have supported that have worked in our favor. I think that our layout, our academy system, making a big school essentially smaller, especially our ninth grade academy, has been a positive factor. The fact that we've we've instituted the senior conferences system, or we're starting to talk about, talk with people about their post secondary plans, what are your what are your future plans and helping students and families make those kind of arrangements and and get them thinking about what the next step is and how we can better serve them helps us keep them engaged and involved in in high school. That goes along with our whole plan of study system, where we can get kids thinking about the long game instead of the short, just what's right in front of them. The cooperation we have with our truancy diversion program and our court system, keeping kids in school, keeping them focused and working with families towards graduation. That got to be a little tougher the last eighteen months when the the courts weren't necessarily in session and they weren't seeing people necessarily face to face, but still, it's a good partnership. And then the other partnerships we have with different programs that we've had in front of you before, the JAG program, communities and schools, our partnership with the community college, those are all great. Great things that we think work in our favor to keep kids engaged in school, to keep them in school, keep them working towards graduation. So in the end, our numbers are here for our total student body. We saw about a half a percentage point gain in our graduation rate this last year from ninety point three to ninety point eight. Numbers aren't available for the entire state of Kansas, yet the the district numbers just became final, we don't have state numbers as of yet. So here's Garden City High School, another year of gains, which which we're proud of. And our goal is always to to keep climbing little by little, once you get to ninety percent, those gains become a little harder to get sometimes. But we're still working at it, we're still working hard to do that, and we're we're right at or above the state average, which is something that we're proud of. The state will also calculate a five year average for us. So that counts the students who may not have graduated the first time, but then have persisted. So we've got another group of kids who the five year rate for two thousand twenty one were the kids that should have graduated in two thousand twenty, but didn't for one reason or another and persisted, and then were able to graduate. And so that number is increasing also, we're getting more kids with their diplomas. We always like to pay attention to our major subgroups, so we can kind of take a look at areas that, you know, see some trends, see some areas we might need improvement. So right now, the the white student or Caucasian student subgroup, that is up almost at ninety six percent as far as the graduation rate, that number continues to climb. But the largest of our subgroups is our Hispanic subgroup by far. And we're proud of those numbers continuing to climb and showing a positive trend. That's great for Garden City High School, it's great for our community, and that we continue to be well above the state average. And we're pretty proud of that. Our kids have worked really hard and our, we've really tried the last few years especially to engage our families and to keep kids in school. Another subgroup that we take a look at, it's also one of our very large subgroups, is a free and reduced lunch subgroup, and you'll notice this subgroup goes up and down and up and down. And this subgroup is a little harder for us to tackle, because the students who make that subgroup up, we don't get those names. The the federal government, if you belong to the free and reduced lunch program, we can't drill in and see who those kids are. So that one becomes becomes a little more difficult as we look at the data to kind of really drill in. But we've despite us going kind of a little up and down, down by a percentage point and a half this last year, we're still well above what the state average is for that subgroup. And then our last subgroup, oh no, we've got two more. ELL subgroups is another large subgroup and one that we consistently outpace the rest of the rest of the state. That one is another very large subgroup for us, so we're going to start to take a look at ways that we can better serve that ELL program. A lot of the kids that I talked about earlier that are coming in and have a little more migrant background, they're going to fall into the ESL program sometimes. And so that one is an area of concern, we need to work with our ESL program and see how we can how we can continue to better serve those kids. But once again, we are we are consistently outperforming the state in that area. And then the last subgroup is the students with disabilities, this is our smallest of our subgroups. In order to have a subgroup that counts for the state recording, you've got to have thirty kids in it. And so with the students with disability subgroup, that that average, that number is just a little bit above thirty, kind of a small subgroup. So there's a lot of variability in there, one kid can swing three percent or more in this subgroup. And so we we take a look at our students with disability subgroup and we're meeting right now, try to figure out, take a look at the data and see for each kid in that subgroup that didn't graduate, what were the conditions that led to that student not finishing in four years? Are they persisting, or did they drop and taking a look, like I said, at each each one in that subgroup? But even with our numbers kind of going up and down, we're still above the state average in most in every year in that subgroup. So moving from here for Garden City High School, we need to take a look at, continue to take a look at how we do credit recovery, how we do academic interventions for kids that have fallen behind. How we work at setting up programs to keep them persisting towards graduation and recovering those credits. Keep looking at all of our subgroups as we've been doing and identifying any trends. What do we see as a big issue, what do we see as bigger trends? You know, if if we have some subgroup that continues multiple years to be trending in a certain direction, trending downward, then we really need to take a look at that subgroup and find out why. And see what we can do about changing that trajectory. We continue to work with our systems for early warning and getting to kids before they're in danger of not drop of not graduating and doing intervention there. In the last couple of years, we, thanks to your cooperation, we've added an at risk counselor, which you know, that that is going to pay big dividends in communicating with families and working just focusing on those kids that might be at risk as freshmen or sophomores before they get to junior or senior status and and we've got an issue. We've also added on the K State Career Advisor to be talking with kids and families and, like I said, trying to play the long game, trying to get them to look at the future and and make good academic plans and and future career plans and keep them in school. Our continued partner with with truancy and our our truancy office, our truancy attorneys and and the truancy system here in town, we've got a good partnership with them. And our increased interventions in academics. We also want to continue those partnerships with JAG, communities and schools, and then especially with the increased partnerships with the community college and the new academic or the new vocational programs that we've been adding, the things like the automotive, the construction, the manicuring, those kind of programs that can help keep kids in school, help keep kids persisting towards graduation. Lucas will finish up here.
Do you want us to ask a few questions now, or do you want to waste?
I don't, however you guys want to do it.
No, that's a question, no.
Okay.
Are you ready?
Um, just a couple of questions on some of the subgroups.
Yep.
So are kids then, are they double parents or Hispanic kids, are those also ELL kids?
They could be.
Okay, so.
Yeah, they could be double parents.
Differentiate, okay.
Yeah.
They would be at risk.
Yeah, you could you could be white, free, reduced lunch, and special education. You could, yeah.
And that was another question that I got, the students with disabilities, so that doesn't necessarily mean like any student with an IEP?
Yes.
It does mean that.
That's any student with an IEP. At any time during their high school career, they could be someone that came in with a gifted IEP and exited partway through their high school career, if they were in that subgroup, they continue to be counted in that subgroup.
Okay, so that include disability means any child with an IEP, okay, thinking of.
Yep.
Like any trauma.
Yeah, and then it is a little bit different, a little bit tricky, like I said, if you if you were a member of that subgroup at any time during your high school career, you can still count in that subgroup, so you may have been a free and reduced lunch kid as a freshman or a sophomore, but not as a junior or a senior, you're still going to count in that subgroup.
So then I do have one last question, and that's just, so how do you get on the five year track then? It just happens and then track that got it?
They just automatically collect that data for the students that persist and then eventually graduate. So they they keep track of the the they'll keep track of the kids in two thousand seventeen that started but didn't finish. If they finish sometime in this next year, they'll be reported in next year's five year rate.
So when you say they didn't finish, is that does that mean that they didn't pass classes, they didn't take the number of credits needed, or both?
Both, could could be both, could be a student that one reason or another either fell short of getting our hour twenty four credits sometime before September thirtieth of the year they were supposed to graduate. So you know, they were they were kids that were supposed to be on track to walk across the stage in May, one reason or another didn't, didn't have the credits. But good, I mean, the kids that graduated persisted and if they if they get it done before September thirtieth, they count on this year's rate. Some of them are still working now, some of them are still enrolled at the high school now, trying to finish up, and they'll be on next year's five year number.
Do we get dinged for that five year number?
No, the five year number is really an interesting, interesting thing, I'm glad you asked, because it really, as far as I know, Dr. Carlin, it really doesn't doesn't get us anything, we don't get any, I mean, the only thing that really counts is the four year rate, but they publish a five year rate, just they always have it.
Yeah, it's not really a thing, but it's the metric that the state uses and reports to the federal government as the four year graduation rate.
So I mean, it it helps us get an idea of kids that are persisting and that they may not have made it in the four year timeframe, but they're still trying to work and they're still keeping towards their their diploma.
And I might, a few meetings ago, we we looked at that post secondary success metric. If they don't graduate in four years, then they don't, they're out of that calculation, I believe.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's only on the ones that they they take this graduation, these kids. So even if we could have some kids that are persisting towards graduation and they eventually make it and they get their diploma and it may take, may take five years. And they go and they get a post secondary certificate and they get a job, you know, as a respiratory therapist or something. They won't count on our post secondary success numbers, it's just the kids that made it in the arbitrary four year timeline. So like I said, it's not a perfect measure, but it's one that's consistent, it's one that everybody uses.
I'm sure I've asked the same questions.
No, they were they were gonna, I'm glad you asked, especially the ones about the five year rate, it's it's a little bit different, we like to take a look at it, but you know, really, it doesn't get us much, except when you look at each each of those kids, it gets them, you know, they get a diploma, each one of those means somebody was successful and got their diploma and is working towards hopefully a better future.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I may be missing the point here with the students with disabilities line. I mean, I'm just being all the stu, and I'm just trying to get clarification from Dana's question. All students with disabilities have an IEP, but not all IEP students are on the students with disabilities line. Because you said you only had thirty students on the students with disabilities, and I'm pretty sure we have more than thirty students at Garden City High School on an IEP.
Yeah, that's by that class, by that graduating class. So that class, and and I'm not saying thirty was the minimum, thirty was the the basement for having a subgroup, that subgroup may have had more than thirty, it's 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 one of our smaller ones. But that only that senior class that had to have at least thirty kids. They may have forty, they may have, yeah, but it's and that being that year seniors, forty more, soph, juniors, forty more, sophomores, forty more.
Okay, I understand what you're saying now, so, the two, the way that it would be presented in the question I was.
Yep, and that's, yeah, that's that's just our smallest one in that there may be two hundred in the ELL subgroup, but the special education subgroup or students with disabilities is just number wise smaller.
Is that criterion for inclusion in the subgroup set by the state or?
Yeah.
So even if you wanted to take a kid that has an IEP, has a gifted IEP off your subgroup, you can't?
I believe they do it through the kid system, you may know better about how that stuff works, but if you're collecting money from the state for an ESL student, then they automatically count in that subgroup, for instance, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mark.
Please.
Yeah, uh, several weeks ago, we had a vacation for councilors. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, okay, yep.
Um, fresh boards.
Yep.
We had a large chunk that showed up there this year for, you know, for COVID reasons, basically, the whole environment, but we had a counselor specifically dealing with that.
Yes.
Again, all in a subgroup. And I applaud that, and that's a lot of work, but that is another example, I think, of that, to add to that long list that staff at Garden City High School is doing to make sure that kids get up to grade five, even in high school. So I just want to make sure that that really follows on that just.
Yeah, that the that at risk counselor, that deals, his caseload is really just those students who have fallen behind the rest of their class on their track to graduation. You know, a freshman should have roughly six credits to be on track. Six credits each year for your four years of high school gets you your four twenty four to graduate. Those kids that didn't, they're now behind their cohort, they need a special academic plan to recover credits, they need to be working with families, we need to be talking about night school, we need to be talking about summer school. And that's what he's doing. And that was that counseling position that was added with Essers funds during the spring. And we devoted that to just taking a look at at those kids that were at risk and trying to intercede with them early at the end of their freshman year, let's not wait till they're juniors, and they're almost, should be at the end of their path. But let's take a look at them when they're freshmen, when they're sophomores, trying to figure out with the families how we can put together an academic plan to get them caught up. Yeah, it's a big job.
I actually did have one more question, sorry, my handwriting is so bad, I just don't agree, but I am surprised at these numbers following COVID. I just from what we heard about the number of daily grades in the middle schools and different things. Can you kind of help me see how that didn't affect our graduation rates there?
Well, yeah, actually, I think it did. Actually, there were a number of students as we take a look at these, we think our graduation rate could have been higher. We we, you know, we're ninety point eight, we really thought we were going to be ninety one percent or even higher. We did have a number of students in COVID in their senior year when we went remote learning, went got jobs. And the money for them was really good, the money for their families was was life changing. And came to us and and dropped and said, you know, I I promise I'll go get my GED or I'll get a diploma sometime, but I've got to take advantage of this opportunity to make money for my family right now, and so they did. And so we actually, you know, we could have been much higher with some of our graduation rate things. We were we were hoping for for better than just a half a percentage point gain, but that's what it ended up being with some of that.
You have a number for that?
Do I have a number for that? I have three or four that I've just that I know of, that I can think of right now, so that'd be a percentage point more. So that'd be a percentage point more.
Would that be eighteen to drop out?
No, it's got to be sixteen to drop out.
With parent permission?
Sixteen with parent permission. Yep. Yep, but we, we had some kids that said, you know, I can work fifty hours a week and I can make twenty dollars an hour and for my family, that's life-changing money, and I promise you I will come back and get my diploma sometime, but right now I, I need to do this. And we had those conversations. Uh, I can remember having conversations with my associates where they, they told me, Steve, I begged that kid just to hang with us for another month, another two months. We can get you graduated. And, yep, that was their decision.
So has any of them students made it back?
Uh, no, they haven't made it back to our school. Chances are, if they do make it back through, they will probably make it through a GED program.
So is there any plan to recapture those students, to bring them back to, or is it just? I mean, is there a reach-out program? Have we reached out to them and said, hey, come on back, come on back, you know?
I don't know. We, we haven't, but we sure can. We know who those kids are. Yeah. My guess is that Mr. Sullivan will probably see them before they would come back to the, the high school.
Mark, are you, are you good?
Sorry, yes, I'm good.
The voice from above.
All right, um, so I'm going to speak a little bit about the GC Achieve graduation rate. Um, first of all, I, I do appreciate Mr. Boers working with Pratt County to, uh, do the Crystal Apple as a scallywag graduate. I can attest to the rivalry between Pratt and Scotty. Um, so the graduation rate, this is a four-year graduation rate. Uh, I don't have as many subgroups. As Mr. Norby said, you had to have at least thirty kids in a subgroup. With the number of kids that we have in, um, our building, that we just don't have a lot of data for the subgroup. So what you see here is a combination of the virtual academy and the high school side. Um, so, um, in, I don't know what year, maybe twenty eighteen, it probably would be appropriate that we were put on a plan of assistance, um, for graduation rate. Obviously, uh, Mr. Fellis's previous administrator did a good job of getting that, uh, that number, um, rising up um, to a higher number. Um, this year, we're up to seventy-three point eight percent. Again, this is the virtual academy and Achieve High School. Starting next year, those will be separate, well, this year, they're separate entities. Our data will be separated starting next year. Um, we didn't get an official number from the state, but going through each graduate with Mrs. Mormon, uh, we feel like the virtual academy is somewhere around seventy percent, and then the high school graduation rate was, um, up near seventy-eight or seventy-nine, but this is what we have to work with um, from the state. Does that kind of make sense? So next year, they'll be separated out. There'll be the high school and then there'll be, um, the virtual academy. So interventions that we have for graduation, obviously, on the twenty-one credit hours program um, for students that get behind, um, our criteria for, um, admission, um, for our kids, our, our seniors that are on top, tracked to graduate, or not on track to graduate from GCHS but could graduate on time with us. So Mr. Norby was talking about some of those kids that maybe were close. Um, they would be closer to twenty-one than twenty-four. They may leave, they may come back. When they re-enroll, a lot of times the enrollment office will say, hey, look, this kid can graduate with you. They're a lot closer. Will you take them? And we take those type of kids when they come back to us, if they, if they choose to come back, you know, some of them, um, continue working, some of them get the GED, but the enrollment office will call up and say, hey, we've got a kid that, that could, you know, graduate on time with you guys. Um, and so that's one group that we, um, that we try to go after. Kind of rollbacks that are not on track to graduate from GCS but could graduate on time at GC Achieve, the, the fresh moors. Um, the number is staggering, as Mr. Norby had said, the fresh moors. So I don't know, we're, we are going to, um, be able to take some of those kids. We're working to get maybe some more teachers. Our core, core classes are getting to the point where it's no longer an alternative setting. Um, once you get up to eighteen, nineteen kids in a math or ELA, um, classroom, it, it starts to not look like an alternative or a non-traditional, um, setting. So we're working to get more, uh, maybe some more teachers so we could accommodate some of those, um, fresh moors. And then we also, uh, and I just wanted to go over our, kind of our criteria for bringing folks in. I don't have that on the slide. And then the third is just kids that maybe want a smaller setting. They may have anxiety. They may want to go to the automotive program. Um, and with that, um, so interventions we have, uh, at Achieve, um, in our ingenuity lab, we have support. We, this year, we hired, the state said, um, previously, uh, students with IEPs, we could not accommodate them. We did not have a special education uh, teacher at the high school portion at the virtual academy. So we do have a, um, certified special ed teacher. We have students that have IEPs in our building. The state came in and said, part of the graduation process, you need to have that ability to take on those students. So we have that teacher. Um, is supporting the classified staff member in our ingenuity lab and helping those students that, um, are on IEPs. Um, we also have an intervention pair up, which is new to us this year. Um, he's been pulling those students that maybe are fifth-year seniors, but they could graduate before that September thirtieth cutoff date, and he, he'll take them and work with them one-on-one. Let's get you through the ingenuity. Let's get you through maybe the class you need. And so there's a little bit more of that one-on-one. Um, we have that ability to pull students, and we have a number of fifth-year seniors that, that will count toward a fifth, five-year, um, cohort cohort, but not a four-year, that he's working with right now. Let's finish up what you have done, or what we can, what we can get done. Um, another thing we've done is the latest start time truancy was a big issue in our building, um, with our at-risk students. It's better. It's not perfect. We work with the truancy officer, the same truancy officer GCHS has. But our new start time of eight-twenty, we have seen attendance numbers better. Um, if we can get the kids there in the morning on time, um, we see a lot better chance of graduation. Uh, another thing that the state came in and said, um, you've got to allow, previously, freshmen were not allowed at, um, GC, or the Garden City Alternative formerly, Garden City Achieve. Um, now we're allowing freshmen to come in. We have a, a handful of freshmen. Um, I'm, we're going to work with, uh, work with KH. Maybe there's a kid that has anxiety. Maybe there's a kid that wants to go into the automotive program. Maybe there's a kid that will fit our smaller setting and they just want to graduate early and, and work in the family business, or whatever it might be. So we're going to start grabbing more freshmen. Um, the state, you know, obviously, if a kid starts with this as a freshman, they're going to have a better chance of graduating with the twenty-one credit hours. Um, we have a lot of the same partnerships as GCHS, um, the Jobs Across America class. Um, a num-, most of our kids take that at some point, um, as an elective. Just give them more skills, um, towards graduation. They also, there's a block at time in that class that they work on at home or in their other classes. Um, Kansas Gear Up is housed at, uh, the, at, um, JDA Hall. Um, Amanda Kennedy, she's the regional coordinator, but she works closely with some kids that, um, might be at risk to get them, um, some, get them towards graduation, working on, um, college career applications, those type of things. Um, we're, we're real excited about the automotive program, which is housed, housed at, um, JD Ones Hall. Um, you know, I have, I had a kid that caught me, um, in the hallway last week and he goes, I would have dropped out if it wasn't for this program. I, I come to school on time. I didn't before because they have to be there at its first thing in the morning. And he, you know, he's like, I would not have graduated without this program. Now, there's a good chance that he's going to go on to that program at the college. So we've taken a kid that was not going to be a graduate, and now we have somebody that's going to get skills and, and be successful after college. So I know it's just one kid, but it's those, those type of stories and, and the, um, you know, the carpentry, the other, um, the other courses at the community college, um, are helpful as well for our kids, but the automotive program, they have to be there early in the morning. Once you get them there, they're there for the day. They're taking their other courses. So that's, that's been huge for, um, I, I, we have about ten kids in that enroll right now out of our high school. And then, um, Kansas Learning Network, we meet monthly, um, to work on what are we doing to improve the graduation rate. Obviously, it was, um, not where it needed to be. It's not where it needs to be right now, but we're going to continue to get it up towards the state average. Um, another thing that they, that's in place, um, is quarter school. So we have our kids gain credit on the quarter uh, because of the ninety-minute blocks. So students that are, are failing, if they have between the fifteen and fifty-nine, they have to have fifty percent at the end of the quarter, um, they can, they qualify for quarter school. And now they have to come in after school, do it on their own time. Um, we have teachers that come in and provide the necessary work for them to raise their grade. Um, they have a set amount of time. Um, usually, it's one to two weeks, depending on which, which quarter it is. Um, we have a little bit more flexibility in October than we would, um, over, over the Christmas and, uh, holiday. Um, once the work's completed and needs to accept those, so that teacher has to sign off. They provide the work. Um, it's, if it's determined by that teacher, the student's grade can be changed from an F to a D in Skyward. We save a lot of our kids, um, a lot of our at-risk kids, um, a credit by doing this, and, but, but it's on them. They, they have to come in after school and do the work provided. I mean, we'd like them to do it the, kind of the first time around, but this gives them, um, another safety net for a lot of our at-risk kids. And then no student will be denied an opportunity. So just some things that we're kind of doing to try to, um, get our graduation rate up to a higher, higher standard. So any questions?
I was curious about the quarter school and if you had numbers on the success rate for that.
I do not, but I can, I can write that forward, so. I just signed the, um, I have to go through and sign. I just signed all the kids for this last quarter, so we can get those one push through and how many grades we take and get those through the counselor too in the past.
And you, I don't know if you pay attention to this, do you have students that repeat that consistently?
I would say probably yes. From talking to the counselor, yeah. There's some frequent flyers in quarter school. We, we get them through eventually. Yep. Any other questions?
Um, like your kid with the automotive, do you talk to them about going to like the community college and maybe taking some business classes and stuff like that because, you know, maybe they could become a business owner or something like that with that automotive thing or something like that?
Yeah, a lot of them want to go into business for themselves and they don't know what all that takes. So, yeah. I mean, we do mention that, that would go hand-in-hand with the automotive program. You've already got a lot of the credit hours. I mean, the dual credits are awesome, so they're already on their way. They're, they're starting at a different spot in the automotive, but, yeah, we do have that, those conversations because they, a lot of them do want to own their, own business. They just don't know about that quite in details.
Yeah, I talked to one of my ki-, my same kids, my current same kids, and, um, she's one of those fresh moors. And I'm like, hey, you, I mean, you could, she had the fancy nails and everything. I'm like, you like nails? And she's like, yeah, you know, they, we've got that nail tech program. And she's like, and then, you know, you might want to look into some of those business classes. And then the next half-time she came to court, she's like, there's that nail tech program and I'm going to go to the college. I'm like, well, first you got to graduate. So you might want to make sure. I'm taking my night classes. I'm doing good. Great. So, I mean, you ought to find that hook.
Yeah, if we can give them passion and then the dual credit, the free dual credit is amazing for these kids that have that opportunity.
So you mentioned, um, being non-traditional. So that doesn't change any of the ways that your, um, rates are calculated? Just because you're, you consider yourself non-traditional, but that doesn't change anything?
No, other than we have, I mean, we're at the state minimum for graduation credits, at the twenty-four credits. I mean, that would be the only difference, but, yeah, we, we don't have any special, we're lumped in with any of these.
And then with the, um, quarter school too, um, because you said at-risk kids for quarter school, so is it?
Any kid that gets a fifty, I mean, I, I mean, a lot of our kids are at-risk.
I would be curious about the demographic for quarter school, and that's just a matter of school too. Um, would be great information. I'd probably ask that for the board, um, but.
We can definitely get some out on that. I'd like to see the trends too.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mark, any questions?
Uh, no, just intrigued, amazed, and, uh, would appreciate all the work. Both high schools are doing a good job.
Mark, garden comments? Yeah, I just wanted to first compliment these, these guys and their staffs, um, on, on some really great progress. We don't have our district numbers yet. Um, they're not released from the state yet. So we couldn't report on the combination of these, but I, I have a little bit of data. But before we get to that, um, for a long time at our alternative center, what we saw was what looked like sixteen, seventeen, and, and eighteen, nineteen. We saw one year where we were kind of low. The next year, we saw improvement, and then the next year, we'd see it dropping in kind of that zigzag yo-yo kind of thing. What's encouraging here is, um, at Achieve now, we've got four years of an increasing trend, uh, in that data, and, and so that is, um, that's just really phenomenal to see. Um, again, happens with tons and tons of targeted, dedicated, dedicated work, so kudos. And, and, uh, Steve and the high school have great numbers as well. So, um, district-wide, in twenty fifteen, our district graduation rate, when you combine these two, was seventy-eight point eight. Um, last year, in twenty twenty, we saw we were up to eighty-six point two. And then this year, uh, I'm doing a little calculation here, trying to combine these numbers, so I don't know that this will be exactly where we are, but, but it looks like it'll be about eighty-seven point five. So again, seeing that trend and moving in that upward direction, and, um, of course, our, our goal is to first be at the state average and then be above ninety and ultimately ninety-five percent. So we've got a ways to go, but, uh, the, uh, the indications are we're seeing some really positive progress. The other thing is that post-secondary success metric that we reported on a few meetings ago, a major factor in that is graduation rate. So the fact that our last two years have been above eighty-six percent would tend to predict, because remember, that lags two years. It looks at what kids do after they leave high school. So those two years of real positive graduation rates are not even factored in yet to the post-secondary success measure. So it's promising that we should have, um, we should anticipate some pretty good results over the next two years with the post-secondary success metric the state gives us. Great. Thanks, guys. Yep, thank you, guys.
Can I just make a comment on the way, I would guess, and just say, I appreciate the questions because more questions you're asking on this are going to be able to help not just you, but everybody watching understand a little bit more about how all this stuff gets put together and they just don't see a number put somewhere. They kind of understand maybe a little better what goes into it. So.
I'm really happy to hear you say that because that is a lot of times why you get a lot of questions or, um, and I appreciate you saying that because sometimes I don't think people always understand why we ask questions again and again, but we get new people watching or new people paying attention or just new people showing up. So it's just important that we try to ask questions that they might be asking. So thank you for saying that. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Unfinished business. Prove it. Understand? It'll be something.
All right, if I, well, I talked about getting extra masks and doing the no-eagles, no-eagles, no-eagle because this isn't as good as I, this is the last board meeting was. The district COVID sample. There we go. Okay, positive cases by week, so this ends eleven-five. Did go down just by one, but it was holding steady as of last week. The positivity rate for Fiddy County, uh, dropped just a little bit. Uh, she did tell us that they are testing more, so that's going to cause that to change a little bit. Local hos-, local hospital COVID patients has gone up, um, overall, and it's holding steady. What we typically hear is, yes, it's still seven or eight patients every, every time we have a meeting with that department. New positive students, um, you can see that that jumped from twenty-one to thirty-three, and we came real close to being And we came real close to being that week average today. So today we had 19 positive cases, so that number's going to go up next week. Then the average number of students sent home a day dropped, and again, I think we will anticipate that going back up again next week. So we had sent six students home from one school by nine o'clock this morning. So again, I think we're going to see that going back up. Average daily absences by week. The blue is our student absence by day for COVID, and then the top line is all absences. So it trended down just a little bit last week. But our quarantine number saw an all-time high today with almost 190 kids in quarantine today. Weekly attendance rate went down a little bit from 88 to 87. Staff attendance, the absences went down a little bit. And again, we saw that going down just a little bit at the end of the week last week for COVID as well, by one. So I was getting really hopeful that that was better, but again, today we kind of surpassed that again. So we had three J's today. New positive staff by the week, we went up a little bit last week from four to six. Our substitute data, we, I'm going to give kudos to Heath's department and the ladies in there that are really doing a nice job recruiting more subs for us. People to come in and do the work when folks are gone. And so we're seeing that go up just a little bit, and I know everybody is really grateful that we're not having to cover quite so many classrooms in-house. So that's a really good thing. Average number of students quarantined today went down, you know, as you can see from a couple of weeks ago. But again, anticipate that going back up this week. Maybe by the end of the week it'll, I can say, oh, look, I was wrong, it's going down, but today it went back up. Back to the power link, so you have to close out in that one here?
Ask you a quick question?
Absolutely.
At least if they're quarantined, is there exposure to, direct exposure to someone who's now going to be positive and they are not vaccinated?
Correct, yeah, if they're vaccinated.
Quarantine time for that exposure, if they're unvaccinated, they're exposed to someone, their quarantine time is?
14 days.
14 days, if they are vaccinated and they're exposed to someone, their quarantine time is zero.
Correct.
If they're vaccinated and they display symptoms of COVID and are tested and have had a breakthrough infection, their quarantine time is?
It will vary, but usually it's about 10 days for any of our positives. So it's different from.
It's changing.
Well, it's, if you're positive, it's usually the 10 to 14 days depending on symptoms. They say they want you to go, and I'm not Michelle, so, but talking to her, I believe you have to go 24 to 48 hours without fever is what I remember. So it partly depends on your symptoms. But if you're quarantined, that's different, you're not positive, but you've been exposed, and that incubation window is 14 days. So that's the difference.
So if you're, if you're vaccinated and you have a breakthrough infection, you'll only be isolated for how long after the last fever?
Oh, well, usually it's 10 days from onset of symptoms.
Here's the point I'm trying to make, I think that's, I think that's going to revolve, so this issue of breakthrough infections is going to change how long, it's going to change people's idea of the value of being vaccinated. Because in my world, if you're unvaccinated, you can expect a little two-week time of isolation and off work, possible. But if you have the breakthrough infection, you're likely to overcome that breakthrough infection about 40 hours, 72 hours. And if you overcome it that fast, you're good to go back to work.
In our plan that the health department put together for monitoring those, they did have an option for an early test if you were symptom-free. However, we don't have enough tests to do that, so right now we're holding to that 10 days.
That's fine, okay, thank you.
I think it may also be good to point out on the quarantine number, the vast majority of those, almost all of them are not, we're not talking about school exposures in that number, right? Those are exposures at home to positive contacts.
Correct.
Because most of our school exposures, they get a choice to quarantine or come to school and wear a mask. And most by far, a handful of people have chosen not to do that, but most choose to wear the masks and stay at school.
That is correct, yeah, we do have a few more this week that are quarantining because of an exposure at school. Because we have two red classrooms that I'm going to talk about in just a minute.
It's really on my mind because I had personally experienced this week with a staff member who didn't want to get vaccinated. And she made the comment, if I would have known that I had to be off work this long, I would have gotten vaccinated. And beyond that, and she didn't have her kids vaccinated, even though she could. So she got caught in the worst of both roads, she had to stay home, take care of her kids, yeah. She also, because she wasn't vaccinated, was a candidate for quarantine. About right, when her kids are supposed to come back to school and she's ready to come back to work, she got herself.
We've had a few of those cases, so people that have missed three to four weeks of school because they stayed home with a child that was positive. And the child gets to go back after 10 days, they can't come back until 14 days. And just before the end of that 14 days, they come down positive, and then it's another 10 days after that. So we've had several cases like that.
I've been trying to change people's minds about this vaccine based on safety. And it's starting to occur to me that there's another thing for people to consider here. How will it affect their regular life? We see now situations where you can't enter countries, you can't, in some cases, go to work if you're not vaccinated. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think Dr. Ferland answered one of them. So the students that are choosing modified quarantine are not included on the quarantine list?
Correct, correct.
Again, I ask that every time.
Yeah, no, the ones that are in modified quarantine get to come to school even though they've been exposed as long as they wear a mask.
Okay.
And my second question is, do we have numbers that compare to our absences per week in previous years? I was just curious if our absences in times of COVID are a lot higher? More based on, and I don't know if you can split that stuff, but the illnesses versus just the quarantine? I'm just curious if we have more sick staff and kids than we did in prior years, or if it's comparable? Does that make sense?
Right, so we don't have anything that, where we've tracked it that closely due to reason in the past, or even maybe weekly? I mean, we typically look at our overall attendance rate, and normally we're, for the year, we would be between 94 and 95%.
Okay.
Since this began, we've been nowhere near that, I think the highest.
Well, it's not like we've seen charts like that, but I couldn't remember how they were set up, so that answers my question.
Yeah, I think the highest we've been is maybe 90.6 in a given week. But you can see on that that, you know, we are well below 90 right now, so we have considerably more absence.
Right, but that includes our 150 that are in quarantine, though they are not ill, they've just been exposed.
Correct.
Thank you.
So how is this impacting us this week? We do have, as of today, seven of our yellow, seven of our elementary schools are yellow, so that means they have at least one positive in the building. Two of those seven have red classrooms, so there has been an exposure at school. And at least three students are positive from what we can only assume to be in-school transfer. So none of the students have, you know, mom is sick, or dad is sick, or a little brother got it first, and they got it at home. So these are all considered to be in-school exposures if we classify them as a red classroom. So we do have two of those schools right now. What we do is, in addition to those students being on the quarantine list and getting their work from the teacher via showbie or Zoom or however we can do it, and some of that depends on the families, we do have follow-up discussions with each of those principals and with the health department. Is it anywhere else in the building, what else do we need to do, are we doing okay? Do we want to consider masks for any other classrooms where we're starting to see an outbreak? The conversation depends on the building. So far, we've not felt like we needed to do anything other than what the schools are doing. One of the schools, until today, only had a breakout in that one classroom. Now they've started to see a few more in some other classes, but only one kid here in this classroom and one kid in another classroom, so not a congregate yet. But they felt like there was no need to mask up or do anything other than what they were already doing since it was just held to one classroom. We do have both intermediate, both middle, and both high schools on that yellow list as well. We have quite a few positives, obviously, in the district this week. We do, we did suspend the Kenneth Henderson Middle School wrestling team until 11-18, and they have five confirmed positives on that team. We had the highest number of positives this year to date, and that was 19 today. And our, and just, I guess on a good note, last Friday we had a vaccine clinic up at the high school. They gave out over 70 vaccines, and they also gave out boosters, and they had to close down early because they ran out of vaccines. So that was, they had so many people show up, so I guess that was a good thing. So that was staff and students that went to that clinic. We are also going to hold another clinic on the 23rd, which is an in-service day in the morning. So that's going to be a booster shot clinic only, so mostly staff, so on that one. Any questions?
You have a question? Mark, Mark, do you have any questions?
No, I don't, I appreciate the information.
I just want to enter parent contact, because I felt like initially, and this is just personal, I mean, hate to break off the table this way, but just because it's on my side of communicating parents, I felt like when I was sent the notice, you know, there's been an exposure. Then my child was asked to use, to wear a mask. Now I've got like three in this last week, one from the high school, two from KH. I asked her today, so are you wearing a mask at school? She said, no. So are we now getting notices anytime there's any case in the building?
So we have two letters that go out, we have one that says there's been a positive and an exposure at the school. And we have a second letter that says your child has been new to close contact.
Okay, all right.
A no?
Yeah, maybe it's not me, but yes.
At the secondary level, you have to get the close contact letter to wear the mask.
Okay.
So anybody that's a close contact must wear the mask.
Vaccinated or not, they have to wear their mask.
If they're vaccinated, there are exceptions.
They don't have to, okay, okay, same here.
Thank you, anybody else?
No, thank you.
And Dana, I think my reminder goes off like a five times a day. Say, yeah.
Thank you, Linda.
Before we go on to G2, may I make a suggestion that we reorganize and go to H2? Because I see that Mr. Allen is here, and maybe we could bump that up so that he doesn't have to sit through G2 and H1.
Anybody else okay with that? Mr. Allen, you have a question?
Thank you, and my apologies to whoever's here for G2 and H1. They sound ominous, so I'm going to run through those again. Before you today is one, our HID, I think we were on a track where two of them probably would have come before you. One pulled back to reassess, they'll start the process over, you'll see that project eventually. The one before you that you've been noticed on is called Hunter's Glen, it's north of the cemetery. This is space two of a development that's in there, I think the development's changed names, so this is probably the first one under this name. If I'm not mistaken, and the developer, I think, is reorganized and has a new name, but by and large, the same sort of development plan, the same neighborhood. Eighty high-level map, and then I'll stand for questions. Eighty-some units, eighty-six. Anticipated to be a fast build, 60 units in 2022, 26 units in 2023. Duplexes and quadplexes, so denser development, which kind of banked to the buck that the infrastructure is certainly appealing. As is just the need for housing units. Cost of infrastructure, eligible cost of infrastructure is a taxing for the financing, they pay their taxes, 100% of their taxes. The portion of those taxes above and beyond what was taxed on the property previously, in this case agriculture, so very little. So it's not 100% of any, but it's about 98%, it's quite a bit. Will generate about 1.7 million, eligible expenses though are 3 million. So unlike some other projects that you may see a cap where they could have generated more, but their infrastructure was less, this is split. This infrastructure is greater than what they bring in. If it's taxed higher next 15 years and they pay more in, then the eligibility to recover more than 1.7 million that's estimated. But right now, the way it stands, 86 units, appears that there's $3 million in eligible infrastructure costs in the project. If they build out 60 in 2022 and 26 in 2023, they're going to be able to generate about 1.7 million to recover the cost of that. As a reminder, eligible expenses would be things like sewer, water, electric infrastructure, roads, permanent gutter stormwater. Not the vertical construction. Can I answer any other questions on this project?
A couple of questions.
You mentioned there are duplex and quadplex, is that the majority of what we're needing in the community? And you probably come to us and talked about it before, I just, I was curious what was the highest in demand at this point where we were at?
So our housing study, which is kind of fresh off the, fresh off the press, will definitely show you that in sort of the lower, the lower priced housing, whether it be rental or owner occupied, is where the most need is. Reality is you can't construct a unit, you can't find a developer that's going to build a $150,000 house and have it cost them 250,000, what's that, 100,000 if they sell it? So really, the strategy for digging into the 600 or 700 unit shortage is development about any price point. I mean, if a developer's willing to take on some private risk to try to sell something, you hope that everything settles out once supply and demand become in a little bit normal. So we show need across almost every category. Custom build higher in historically less so, but I think even this new study shows that there's demand there. The hope is that you fill those bottom two categories of the owner occupied and little units in two ways. One, there are some programs that developers can choose to participate in where they do some income qualification and that type of thing. That can help buy out the actual cost to the renter. But everything else, you book the existing stock, comes, kind of comes back down in price and books you. It's the probably more than a million dollar question at this point, hundreds of million dollar question is, where do you build? How do you build when you're 600 or 700, even short, if you just take anything at this point? Other questions?
Any questions?
The action doesn't require you to take a guess vote, on some occasions you have, if you were to take an action adverse against the development, or if the college were, or if the county were. or if the college were, or if the county were to, it would eliminate the use of this tool. So that's just kind of a refresher on where we're at. You're in a thirty-day window with us. We send out a notification. If you want to take action, you can. It's not necessary to allow the project to continue. Thanks for having me. Thanks for looking pet line. I'll figure out who I pet in front of when they clear out the.
Thanks for having us. You should commission.
Thank you. H two. G two, approve the board attorney selection process.
So I'll kick this off a little bit. At the last meeting, we had shared a recommended procedure to, for the board to select their attorney. One of the board members pointed out to me that our board policy actually has in it a, an outline of a process to do that. I was aware we had a board policy about the school attorney, but I had not remembered that it went on to be specific about the actual practice. There's a lot of similarity between the two. What was proposed and what was in that policy. But certainly you have, in my opinion, a couple of options tonight. You could choose to follow the written policy, and I think it was last approved in nineteen ninety-seven. The probably, or you could choose to follow the recommended procedure, or you could create your own. The difference between the two primarily is the, the written policy, the existing policy calls for information to be solicited from interested parties, them to be provided a questionnaire. That's consistent with the policy, the practice that we recommended rather. The next step in the, in the existing policy is to, for the board president, the superintendent, to appoint a committee to screen the, the information received from the, the interested attorneys. And then for the board as a whole to interview those finalists. The procedure that we recommended basically asked for the, once the responses were bad from the interested attorneys, a committee of my leadership team and up to three board members would interview and then bring a recommendation back for the board's consideration. Before we knew that there was the written policy in place, I did have three board members who volunteered to serve. So again, either path is certainly workable. If you choose to, to do the whole board, do the interview, that would have to happen in an open session board meeting. So we would need to identify a date that you would want that to happen. So there's a little background on it. We're prepared to start either of those processes tomorrow. Just need some guidance from you on which route you want us to go.
So we'll move forward to discussion, Jennifer.
I have a couple, I have a couple of questions. I believe it was stated that we need to have this finished by January first. Is that correct? Or did I, or and what's our timeline? If we have a set timeline, will it make it different based on which one we pick?
So, you know, Mr. Griselle's retirement's effective at the end of the calendar year. A couple of Plan Bs that we have if for some reason we weren't done. I don't think there should be a problem with, you know, getting either of these done in that timeframe. I would, I would, I would guess that Mr. Griselle's firm would continue representing us for a month or two if it was necessary. If, if not, or if the board wasn't interested in that, we do also pay for legal services through the Kansas Association of School Boards. So we have some access to legal advice there. And, but we can rely on them as well as secure K S B members. So the board would not be without an attorney if for some reason this took longer. Again, I, I think either of these methods, I think we could keep the same timeline. It would just be a matter of scheduling that time for that interview with the entire board.
I just don't want us to feel rushed if it's not required, but if we can definitely fulfill the process in a timely manner and have someone hired before the end of the year, I think that's sufficient. I just want it to be out there. We're feeling rushed and it's not moving along as we feel needed that the option was there.
So if we choose the, the recommended process, do, do we need to make changes to the process that, or to the policy that's there?
My suggestion would be if you, if you choose the recommended process, at the end of the process, you could make a decision. Do we want to amend that policy and amend it to what we did? Or do you want to say, well, next time we do this, maybe we ought to do it the other way? That was originally in the policy. But it probably would be good, once we're through this process, to at least review that policy and get it the way you want it. Since it's been over twenty years since that policy's been made.
Yeah, yeah. I just think if you had to change the policy or so we're following board policy, so it's okay to.
Yeah, you have the authority to set aside your policy if you, if you choose to do that.
Thank you.
I guess the good news is with having Mr. Griselle as the attorney for as long as he has, we really haven't been confronted with this too very often. So hopefully our, hopefully the attorney you find next will be as good and you'll have that kind of longevity with them too.
Okay. Not really, I'm one of the three, so either way, I'm gonna be there.
Same here. Mark, any comments, discussion?
No, just I find a recommended policy or process. I'm comfortable with setting our current policy aside if that's what we all decide. I don't really feel rough here. I agree with Jennifer. There's really no need to feel rough. I think we've got, as Dr. Carlin described, options for our legal counsel, but in one case clear, we can't be without it. So again, I'm, I'm comfortable with the recommended procedure.
I'm probably coming at it from a different perspective as well. I, I don't know how many options you actually will have in the legal community. I will tell you, going through the college process, it only took a couple of weeks. And they did a pre-proposal meeting. There were four firms that went. One, one dropped out because they decided not to do it. So, and I don't know about one of the other ones, whether or not they went through it. So you're looking at maybe two or three who might even apply. So it's not like you're gonna have tons of applications to review. So, I mean, just know that going in. It's, I mean, I think you can streamline this and make it pretty simple. So I think going with the streamlined way of doing it with the three board of education members and the leadership team. I don't even know if you need to do interviews. The college did not. They just reviewed the proposals and then made a recommendation to the college and the college is voting on it tomorrow. So just some additional information for you guys to consider as well as to whether or not you need, how in-depth you need to make it. So I have some language here that was provided for some motions, so.
Okay. Can I ask, and maybe, maybe after the motion. I was just cur, if these two options are very similar, I'm curious as to why we would maybe consider going against policy that's already in there. I feel like as a board we often, and I'm not trying to talk anybody out of anything, because I don't know either. I'm just questioning it. Often we promoted following policy unless there was a dire need to go against it. And I'm, I'm still trying to process the differences, why we would go with a different recommendation versus staying with the policy.
I think the current policy has the full board interviewing.
Right, so I guess that's what I'm asking is what's the weakness with the current policy that would want us to use the recommended one instead? That's my question.
Sure.
And that's the question I'm asking myself as I decide which way I would vote on that. So I was hoping maybe I could, I'm not trying to start a debate or anything. Maybe you guys could help me understand that. Does that make sense?
Sure. I, I would.
And you may have been starting to mention that a little bit or kind of mentioned streamlining it.
Yeah. The only thing I come up with is that I don't know of any attorney that would want to come up and do a full interview in open session in front of six or seven board members. I am one of the three that wants to sit on the interview committee, so.
And, and that's the basic difference in the two, is that right? Is that really the only difference?
Yeah, one's full board.
Or is there more than that?
Three.
There's a few because it says like, a survey questionnaire will be sent to firms. A screening committee will be appointed by the board president and superintendent will recommend firms to be interviewed. So there's a couple, and I do think that they're probably, we're streamlining it with the recommended process. And I agree with Alex, not putting people like maybe in public, like kind of on this.
Uh huh.
Like those were the major differences. And I didn't mean to throw wrench into the process. I accidentally, I accidentally came on this policy while looking for something else. But I thought that the board should be aware that there is a policy. So if we're going against policy, we should probably.
And I think it's important for us to have discussion here as to why we would not follow our policy. Does that make sense even? Because I, after I started talking, I, I felt like I sounded like I was against doing the recommendation and that's not necessarily the case. I just really think that we should communicate as a board as to why we don't follow the policy and decide to go with another recommendation. I just want a clarification on that.
Mark?
No, good discussion. Ryan, Mark, I think you covered all the points.
I'm gonna at least start with making a motion then. I'm gonna move, we used the process recommended at the last Board of Education meeting, which may include interviews to be conducted by the superintendent's leadership team and up to three board of education members and a recommendation provided to the full Board of Education to vote on.
Once you made my alarm.
Second.
Once you made my alarm, second by Jennifer. Any other discussion?
How would we decide if we are gonna do interviews?
Well, I think you had, it was my understanding that you were gonna have a screening process. And I think that the screening process of the board members and the leadership team would be able to make a decision. You may have something very clear cut before you as to, with the information that's provided by the firms as to whether or not you want to interview or not. You may have Randy Griselle two versus newbie one. And it's very clear that you don't want somebody who's just graduated and may handling the board's business versus Randy Griselle two.
Who's gonna decide if we do interviews?
Well, just if I can answer this, I think. I believe we've sent out the RFPs. So after this, we will send out the RFPs and then once we get those RFPs back, we could actually sit down with the question committee.
Have a team go sit down and look and decide.
And do the interview?
It was my understanding, listening to the YouTube of last meeting, that it was the leadership team and the three board members who were going to be reviewing all of that. And so that same committee would then decide whether or not you needed to do, conduct interviews or not.
I have another comment on that. I haven't done a lot of hiring, that's not in my career field, but I am a little concerned about hiring legal counsel for us as a board or in general without conversing with someone face to face. Even if we only had one candidate, I would be more comfortable having that opportunity, so.
Absolutely.
That's just my only concern with that.
Say, Jennifer, if we go with motion and I am indeed one of the three?
So I guess I just want to have confidence that the interviews are likely to happen.
I can't say for sure.
Right.
But my sentiment before I get there is, yeah, same thing.
So would it make more sense to, would it make more sense just to leave it in there rather than the may? Like keep the would because that is the intention, but if there's a reason it's not? Or does that negate the whole motion? You have to do may just to give leeway?
I'm trying to leave leeway for the committee. So you can vote it down and then someone else can make the motion. But my motion is for may to leave leeway because I, I mean, knowing who applied the last time around, knowing my guesses as to who's applying based off of word on the legal street anyway, as to who's going to apply for this one, I think it's going to be relatively clear cut. But I think you probably won't want to interview, but I want to leave it up to you, up to the committee to make that decision.
So may gives leeway, would does not give leeway?
Right.
That was my question.
Yeah.
Okay, motion by Laura, second by Jennifer. Up, Mark, please.
Just a quick question. So given the committee, I mean, this is all a good discussion, but I just wanted to know if the board.
The, the three board members that reached out to me were Jennifer, Dr. Anigan, and Alex.
Thank you.
Motion made by Laura, second by Jennifer. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Mark. Thanks everybody. Okay, new business, H one, transfer two and five thousand from the contingency reserve fund to the special reserve healthcare fund to be approved as presented. Dr. Carlin, you have any comments to make?
Yeah, so for the last six years, we have been fortunate to be able to maintain a pretty robust healthcare benefit with very few climate changes and, and either premium increases or increases in the, in the board contribution. This year, our costs are going up. And in working with our health insurance consultants, the, the balance of our fund is getting to the point that we, we need to make sure that we don't let that dip much lower. So our employees are going through open enrollment soon and there will be some increases in premiums that our employees will have to pay. And what we're asking here is for the board to make a contribution of some money from our contingency reserve fund to our health insurance fund to kind of help also to, to, to balance that projection. The insurance consultants have given us a three-year plan where without any, any changes to adjust our, our plan more or make some other cost-saving adjustments, we can anticipate this being something that will happen annually. And when we go through our negotiations process with, with the teachers association, that's something that would have to be considered in, as we go through that process. This is a, our, our, the details of our health plan are something that are subject to negotiations because of the way our negotiated agreement is set up and because our, it is a mandatorily negotiable topic in the state of Kansas. So lots of good work has went into this from our insurance committee. We're kind of balancing four competing dates here. We've got negotiations that happens usually in April and May. We've got teachers' contracts that begin usually in August, but sometimes in July or September. And we've got an insurance plan that anniversaries on the first of January and an open enrollment process that happens in, in November. And we don't know what our utilizations and our, we don't have all the data to make these decisions until. And we don't know what our utilizations and our, we don't have all the data to make these decisions until, generally until September, when we have a significant amount of the, of the year behind us. So we're working off of actual utilization data. So um, this plan that they've given us will bring us the opportunity to kind of assuming that our uh, increases follow the, the uh, national average for plans like ours, that um, that our uh, balances would remain where they should, where, where we would need it to be in and even slightly increase um, by the time we get through the third year. So uh, that's kind of what we're asking.
Jennifer?
Yeah, um, I guess I have a couple of questions. One is, I have concerns about, um, is this gonna be a repetitive thing where we're gonna have to pull money out of our contingency reserves? And is that gonna deplete that or can be used to other places? Do you foresee that?
No, I, I, I don't foresee that, um, because we will, we, we now have a three-year outline of a plan going into negotiations. So we will have to talk about um, increases to the board's contribution coming from the dollars that we would typically do for compensation increases. That'll become part of that package. Best case scenario is the health insurance committee may also identify some other strategies to lower the cost and that may not be necessary. But um, absent that, we will, uh, we would use that three-year plan as a roadmap to um, to plan for how we would negotiate, basically. So I, I would hope that we wouldn't have to go back to the contingency reserve. Now, we could have good news and our um, our utilization can be less. Our expected increases can be, can be less than what's projected. We could also have bad news and we could have utilization that was greater. So it's not impossible that that could happen, but uh, based on what the consultants did, it's, you know, it's not likely that we would have to go back to that.
And my other question is, have we looked at any other medical care outside of insurance? I know that there's some local, and I'm more asking this because this is, this question's been approached, you may not understand by me. Um, medical care facilities that, for businesses where you pay a membership, basically, and then all your employees and some of their family members can go in for certain services that may save on some of those fees? Have you, has the district looked at anything like that or has it been presented or?
Yes, so the insurance committee has looked at a number of different models, um, for different ways to save costs. I, I have visited with our consultants, because I, TJ pretty much uh, did the insurance committee. I didn't attend those meetings, um, but I did attend them this year. So I have visited with our consultants to give a little history. So uh, really, um, probably for six years, we've, we've explored different models. The consultants have not been at the point that they felt like the models that are available to us were um, that the cost effectiveness data was able to be validated. And there were issues with uh, our, our provider with Blue Cross, Blue Shield of Kansas would only allow one um, clinic model, one, one particular vendor to be utilized. And um, it was gonna require a three-year commitment on the district's part. So our consultants have not felt like they could support that, um, given the data that they had and the data that they would have had access to. Part of our work with them this year also resulted in a, in a, we'll stay with the Blue Cross network, but we'll be using a different administrative company, um, to administer our plan. And the consultants believe we will have more options for cost savings, both in, through the clinic models and uh, and others as well, uh, to consider also going forward in our work with them.
And do, do the consultants look at other large entities in our community and see how they provide their healthcare? Is there any comparison there?
Absolutely.
I assume they do. I just, insurance is not my forte, so some of these questions may sound, they're all better redundant, but it really helps me understand it when.
They do, and they, and they work with others in other parts of the state. As a matter of fact, they shared with me the, the clinic vendor that um, Blue Cross, Blue Shield would have required us to use. They actually have clients, but they did not believe in our situation, that it was a viable option.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Okay. Said that we've been fortunate for six years. Was it six years ago that we've funded this contingency?
When, when I started as superintendent, I think our contingency reserve account had five hundred thousand dollars in. This past year, I think it, it's at three million seven hundred thousand.
How did it get to be that large?
Through contributions to it.
From?
From our budget.
So our annual budget has been made from contributions to the contribution, to the contingency fund?
Correct.
Yeah.
For, for this kind of occasion, that's what the contingency fund is for.
And what I'm trying to get my head around is, we have this contingency fund that at one time was five hundred thousand. Isn't it, was, then moved to three million seven hundred thousand and is now at, how much?
Three million seven hundred thousand.
It's at three million seven hundred thousand. And I'm trying to, what I'm trying to see here is, how, how is it, like, how did we, did this just happen this year? Did we just get, like, did our contingency become um, of concern? I mean, we're in this spot where we're gonna, we're going to add to the contingency fund of our, of our reserves tonight. And I'm just trying to figure out, like, what happened? Meaning, it seems like a large amount. It seems mid-year. And we couldn't budget for it. We didn't know that the contingency, was the contingency slowly going down year by year? Did it just change this year? Was it funded at one point and meant to be spent down? I'm, I'm trying to figure that out.
Yeah, so the uh, maybe a little difference in language here. The, the contingency reserve fund, we have a health, and, and we have a healthcare reserve fund. So I think maybe the, the language is correct.
Healthcare reserve is correct.
So, um, so the uh, the healthcare reserve fund has been going down for the last several years. Our balance, we were actually overfunded in that and that's part of what gave us the opportunity to not have to raise premiums or decrease benefits. But this is something that in our district has been a priority for a long time, uh, to have a quality healthcare benefit. And so, um, it would be pretty hard to have conversations with the insurance company, or the insurance committee, rather, uh, about um, raising premiums when the balances there are healthy. But we are now at the point that this does need some attention. And it is difficult, and it's happening in the middle of the year. But as I explained, there's a number of competing deadlines and timeframes. And the plan that the insurance consultants have now provided for us allows us to address this year through a combination of employee's premiums increasing slightly and a one-time work contribution here will allow us to go into negotiations with an idea of what we need to do over the next several years if we don't have other ways to, find other ways to control our costs. Where our costs increase at higher rates than what the, the national average will predict, it will rise with increase.
The consultant, um, is recommending that we not consider the, the alternative healthcare clinic, which is a different model here in town. Does the consultant have a financial incentive for that recommendation?
I don't believe so. They work for us and they have a fiduciary responsibility to us in that relationship.
I, I'm just curious. I, I'm not, I don't mean to be implying, so, I'm curious whether or not the financial consultants pay is changed if we change the structure of the health.
Doctor, I'm aware of.
There was a comment made that Blue Cross Blue Shield would only allow us to participate in one of the clinics in town. That's the problem. Did I use the right words, the right, the right name for it?
I don't, I, I'm, I'm not in a, I don't know, uh, what specific clinic it is.
Okay. One of the clinics in town, in my understanding, is actually in part owned by the Blue Cross. I have not looked at their ownership structure to verify that. I've been simply told that. So when you think about, why might Blue Cross Blue Shield only consider, only allow us to have a partnership with one clinic? If it's already here in town, why, why is that? Perhaps the answer to that is, it might actually have financials in it. I don't think that's very wrong, right? I'm just trying to work my way through this. I think also that there's a, there's a little need to be just a little cautious of the healthcare consultants. There's just a little need to just, to just kind of understand that we want and hope the consultant to be completely autonomous and make decisions, help us make decisions that are purely good for us. I have had the implication made that one of the reasons that the, the healthcare consultant does not recommend that we use a clinic here in town is because the healthcare consultant has a financial, but he can change the structure of the pay to the financials. Do I know that's true? No, I don't. These are some questions that have been on mine for a long time. When we fund this, I wanted to openly ask the question, maybe we could have been asking, as our health, what do we call our forms here? I'm losing hope. Our healthcare reserve fund. If the healthcare reserve fund is a refund, a rate, how are we intending to spend that down? Because if we are, if it is spent down, then, then it was spent down with intention. I think that's important to know. It's, it's almost like we've had premiums that have exceeded what we've been able, what, what we, we, what we have come in from our employees. We have premiums that have to supersede our contributions from the employees. Then we gotta tap into the reserve. As we watch ourselves tap into the reserve, at some point, we should, we, I hope that we can be asking, before we actually get in a spot where we have to increase our, what we're doing tonight, maybe we should consider it or not, or at least ask the questions or figure out what's available. Otherwise, we get into this spot where we have to make sort of this between budgets decision. And I wanna make another comment. There was, Dr. Carlin said that the healthcare insurance committee has considered alternatives to what we have in place now, but not the healthcare insurance committee. Now, I'm really trying hard to recollect this. How long have I been on the committee? What exactly happened? I recollect this for sure. The first time that the healthcare committee met, the notification came to me really late, on a weekday, in the middle of my clinic, and I didn't go. I said to myself, I really am interested in this healthcare insurance issue. I'm gonna sign up for the committee again, I'm gonna try to make sure that didn't happen. I think it happened a second time, but I think I don't. I don't know for sure. I have to go back and know if I've been on that committee for three years or just two. But I know exactly what happened, I'm sure. The notification for, for the meeting of the healthcare committee came extremely late, in the middle of the week, in the middle of my patients, I moved my patients. The committee meeting, I got rescheduled, again, very inconvenient time. I moved my patients again. The healthcare committee meeting, I canceled. And I got a notification the day we were supposed to have it, that it was canceled. And as far as I know, the notifications that I got, it was never rescheduled. These are, I think, really clear. I have been interested in this, this subject, put it on there. Should I have gone to the healthcare committee meeting that just happened? I was on the committee. There was three people, two people signed up before I signed up. I actually filled the committee before I saw the committee thing. I signed up as an ex-motorist. Should I have gone to it? I can tell you that I made a deliberate decision not to. Definitely could have been a critical mistake. I mean, I, I am supposed to be there. The thing is, I've been working on this healthcare thing for a really long time. And the questions that I wanted to ask, I did not want to ask them to me. I wanted to ask them right here. I don't know, right? I have no idea. I had, I thought a couple of years ago, this clinic thing, it seems like something the city is really interested in. Matt Allen's a pretty smart guy, saw me here tonight. He's pretty enthusiastic about that clinic. When I realized that with my meeting, and I do have some background in healthcare insurance, I thought, here's a useful place for me to help the district, not to change the plan, but to ask the questions. Two years later, I figured. That's all I have for the patient.
Laura? Laura?
I'm sorry, did you cue me?
No, I queued Laura, but if you'd like to go first, please.
No, I'll pick Laura.
No, she's, she heated, so it's your turn.
I apologize, I, I, computer is weird things that I got back on here. Uh, I, I don't have a whole lot to contribute except specifically, I was able to attend the committee for a number of their meetings. You know, we've got outstanding effort there trying to keep a eighteen-month view into the future of how to balance costs for the district and benefits for our staff. And I just think it's an outstanding process to be involved in. You know, always in motion the future is. And the, the medical costs out there are something that's pretty hard to plan for without contingency funds and, and, and alternatives. And then trying to find a, a best alternative for our teachers, um, you know, for the next year, is something I think this group has kept in mind. And I'm convinced we got the right, um, we got the right approach here. I'm, I'm very much in favor of this transfer. The questions are good as far as trying to be sure that, uh, this isn't a habit. Uh, but I'm convinced after sitting into those, uh, sitting in on those conversations, man. But I'm convinced after sitting into those, sitting in on those conversations, man, it's not a habit. It's, it's just having several options to make sure that we don't fail in getting our teachers security in their healthcare in a way that doesn't shock their, either their salary or their pocketbook. And I just think the group has done an outstanding job here. And we have some real hard decisions to make next year. I mean, the eighteen-year view is not only shaky, but concerning. And so some of these innovations, some of these things that are out there in the community as far as, you know, preventative healthcare becoming a part of the package that we offer, it's just gotta be in those committee conversations moving forward. But for now, I think we've got the right approach. It's the least intrusive as far as change. Everybody likes change, particularly with their pension or pocketbook or their health. And so I think after sitting in on those committees, you know, this is the right approach for now.
Thank you. Laura?
I was trying to go back and look for something, but I couldn't find it. One thing that came to mind is Blue Cross Blue, we're not Blue Cross Blue Shield, we're self-insured. So they're just helping, basically being a clarion house, is my understanding. Is that correct, Dr. Carlin?
There are administrative agents. We hired them to administer our clinic.
Right. And we're self-insured.
We're partially self-funded, correct?
Okay. And we're moving, it's my understanding that this is, we're moving away from Blue Cross Blue Shield and using a new administrator.
We will maintain the Blue Cross network, but we're using National Alliance, a Blue Cross affiliate of Blue Cross of South Carolina.
Okay. And then if, it seems like this is the second time we've had an issue come up with regard to board committee work. And what it seems to me is that what might be helpful, and I was looking at the college's board packet today, is if in the future, it's like I missed the technology committee meeting because it was a short notice one, it was a special meeting, is if maybe in the future there's something noted in our board packet or something, when the meetings are set up and who attends, that way, people know if it is a short meeting or something like that so that if there is late notice, that's putting accountability on staff, that board needs more notice. And then it's also saying if something is out there for a long time, it's putting accountability on board as well, that something had been out there for an extended period of time that, you know, it should have been on our calendar. I know, I got off the calendar committee a few years ago because I missed every single meeting one year because I couldn't make it. It wasn't a convenient time for me and I couldn't do it. I was, I just couldn't do it. So I didn't double check to see whether or not whoever else had signed up was there. I hope they did. That was probably three or four years ago. But that way, everybody, staff and board members are accountable because we can't be, we need time to be able to get it onto our calendar and we need to be accountable for showing up as well. So, but I'm just tossing that out as an idea. I'm not saying anybody's wrong or anything like that. I'm just was thinking about that the other day with some discussions that were going on at the conference this weekend as something that I thought might be helpful for us or the future board transparency as well. So, but I know that we've looked in the past at different ideas. I know when I first came on the board, I was on the insurance committee for a year because I didn't understand why I was in the hospital for a week and paid nothing out of insurance under the county plan. And I was in overnight and paid thirteen hundred dollars under the district plan. And that made absolutely no sense to me whatsoever. So I wanted to find out more information about it and got more information, understood where we were coming from and how the different, how, what a different plan it was. I also understand that the county is struggling with their plan as well and that all, everybody's struggling with health insurance right now. But, and I remember us talking about the possibility of going to a clinic several years ago and trying to come up with different solutions. And, you know, I even vaguely remember Dr. Hanigan you going into a meeting with KJ after a meeting that we had with Dr. Carlin to go and talk to her about it. So, I mean, I know it's been something that we've looked at for a number of years, trying to come up with some sort of solution. So, you know, hopefully we can come up with something in the future, but I don't, I mean, I'm not sure what the answer is, I guess, right now at this point, but I guess I don't know where I'm necessarily going with that, but I know it's been discussed in the past. I think it's been discussed here during board meetings as well as to different ways that we can handle things. I think it's been discussed in negotiations as well, different ways that we could try to handle it. I know that we've been trying to weigh and balance where we are on the health reserve, our health insurance reserve fund with also trying to balance where we are because we don't necessarily want to give a raise, but then necessarily take it away in the same instance with increasing insurance premiums because it's been a very careful balancing act with all of that. So, you know, I think this is a balanced approach with regard to the board trying to come up with a solution and then also dealing with it with regard to the premiums as well. I mean, I think that's where we're at right now. And I think aside from lawyers, healthcare insurance, people are probably the most hated in the world right now. So I don't know where else to go, where else we can go with it to try to get at least something for our teachers and staff.
So, just correct me, that the healthcare fund has five hundred thousand or three point seven?
The healthcare reserve fund has a little over two million.
Over two million.
Contingency reserve is three point seven.
Okay. I remember getting on board in 2012 and as a private entity providing private insurance for my employees through our National School of Health and Benefit Fund, who seven thousand members, we sent five hundred members. It was unique to me to try to understand the district's health insurance plan of how it worked, aside from private. I learned a lot that first year. Kathleen Woodley was on that committee at that time. KJ hadn't made it there yet. But I also remember that we were in a budget crisis. I think we were asking all the departments to come back with the ninety-six, ninety-eight and a hundred budget for each of their department. I believe, I can't remember, it started with thirteen, but we, we were also charged by the state that we weren't running lean enough, that we had a ton of money in our coffers and we didn't. We went to the state school board assembly and sat in on board efficient, not board efficiency, but financial deficiency with some of the state people there and Darren, not Darren Dennis, but his dad, Dale Dennis, thank you, Dale Dennis. And he explained the financial responsibility that we all had as a district. And we kind of found out that we were running pretty lean at that time. We were really, really running really lean because of what the state was doing to us on base data per pupil funding. We made a choice at that time, at that board, that we needed to start looking for alternatives. We needed to start figuring out how we can offset some of these surprises. And no district likes surprises, especially when the state, it's amazing how we can approve a budget, but we don't know where the state and when the state's going to pay us back and pay us for that funding. It's always a lead lag type of deal or a dog chasing the tail to me. But I think this district and that board at that time, even this board now, has done a great job to look forward for the surprise. And with the health insurance rising steadily, even for me privately, it's been astounding, astounding. And I don't know if this is gonna happen the next two or three years after the post-pandemic and current with what we're going on. To offset that, it's like throwing a dart at a very small target and hope to hit it. I don't think we can, but to know that we have a steady three years ahead of us with no surprises is, I believe, what you said earlier.
Well, we hope so.
Hope so. Not another surprise potentially happening, but is awesome. I think that's great. But to have that money in those, those contingency funds is what was decided a long time ago at the boards to have it. So when we had to run the lean again because of state funding, with our numbers going down, the base data per pupil going down from the state, we needed those reserves in there to help offset some of that stuff. So it is a very awesome choice, even with the health insurance committee and Dr. Carlin's team at that time and, and Dr. Heath's team at that time, to see that with Kathleen Woodley and then KJ taking that on and moving it forward is greatly appreciated. I don't know if we are through all the tough times. Hopefully with the insurance, we can stay static for a little bit. I know mine is going up just this year. It's gonna go up in another six months and another six months. It's a huge dollar sixty-five increase per hour. That's a lot for me. But we, I sat in on this Zoom meeting with our insurance people, or was it IMA that was there? Yeah, with IMA. And to see all that stuff, the potential price increases to our, our staff, our people that we are trying to take care of to make sure that we keep them here. That's part of our bargaining, bargaining chip that we need to help retain our teachers, attract new teachers with that health insurance policy. I mean, even the single, single people, to offer them the free insurance is awesome. I've never heard of that. And for what our district does for, to help retain those teachers and staff is greatly appreciated as well. But sometime, between 2012 and 16, we were running lean and we were going from a ninety-six, ninety-eight hundred or even a ninety-eight hundred and hundred-two, we had to take that and the factor of having to offset those price increases. They weren't huge at that time. It's almost danger doubled between now and then, or then and now, as far as health insurance costs. But we stayed the course and we were providing the best insurance that we can at a very minimal cost to our teachers and staff. So, therefore.
Bill? Okay. Mark? Oh, I'm sorry. No? I see a hand raised or a twitch or a scratch. I just want to make sure I don't miss anybody. Everybody has the opportunity to speak, so. Go ahead, Mark.
So you're sitting here for the transfer?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I was just gonna at least put a motion out there to approve the transfer of the two hundred and five thousand from the contingency reserve fund to the special reserves so that we could at least get some.
I accept it. Motion being made by Laura, second by Mark. Another discussion?
I support it.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you, everybody, for the conversation. Good discussion. Next, the board, open discussion. It's a plaudition. Jennifer?
I don't have much. I just need to plug the High School Musical, which is this weekend, Joseph and Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat. I had to write it down, so I said right, but from what I hear, it's gonna be pretty good and they're gonna have an amazing set, fast as usual. So thank you to Ms. Hilt and Ms. Hilt and the other teachers that put all the extra time in to get those productions done for our kids. If you have the opportunity, there's three shows this weekend, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. I'm not sure all the times. That's all I have.
Okay.
I would like to congratulate Ms. Jiggett, Ms. McDonald and Mr. Weezy for, or extend my condolences, I don't know, whichever they would like, for winning last week and extend an invitation to my table on November eighteenth at six or six-thirty. I'll double check and let you know, six, for the Crystal Apple Awards. So, and I would hope that anyone would like to buy tickets as well for November eighteenth and celebrate the five plus, Ms. Hilt, who were, will be honored that night and the six who were virtually honored last year. So we will also be present and recognized in person this year, which I'm really excited about. So that's at the Clarion, like Mr. Sussman said, November eighteenth.
Where do we get tickets for that?
The Chamber.
Okay, you may have sent that.
I don't think I had.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm really excited about that event next week. And then, and I think the district has a table, so you might talk to them.
Okay, well, I just wanted to, just wanted to plug for you and make sure they knew where to go.
And then I went to the KASB conference this weekend and that was great. We had a little bit of a constitutional crisis, but figured it out. And Art Gutierrez will be becoming the president-elect instead of the president-elect designate for a year because our president-elect designate was not successful in his rebit as well. So I'm really excited about Art. He is from Emporia and I think he will do a great job for KASB. And Brad Burksma from Goodland is going to be in the presidency in January because as we were calling her, right, Blake is a quitter and will not be the proud past president. Shannon Campbell will be serving as the past president in perpetuity. We're not gonna let her go. She's from Lawrence. So I'm really excited about all that KASB will be continuing to do. December sixteenth, which is our, the final meeting of this year, is also the delegate assembly where they're gonna be doing the legislative agenda. So I'm not sure if we're gonna be able to step aside just to vote real quick or not, but that can be done virtually. But I'm very excited for all of that's going on there. And then we also honored, excuse me, Frank Henderson, who is from the Steeman School District, and he is the president-elect of the National School Ward Association, I think. And you've met Frank before, haven't you? And he is an incredible leader and he spoke as well. And we had some great speakers. Principal, Principal Al from Delaware was really inspirational Sunday morning, so some great mornings he had, so very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Did we get a retreat scheduled before the first year?
Well, just, you know, but go ahead, please. We have everyone here marked and I'll, I'll be able to follow up.
Well, I guess they expected that we didn't. I guess they kind of expected, which is my final effort to do something different. I guess they kind of expected, which is my final effort to do something different. Different for the board. I didn't think I'd gotten this to get a retreat. Felt like I can't even get a retreat on governance because of the way we govern ourselves. Only the board chair and consultation with Dr. Carlin decide what we discuss and when we discuss it. And I feel like there's enormous effort to control how we discuss it. I'm not supposed to be up here saying these things, especially not like this. Take it from me, anyone who thinks it's a good idea to sit up here. You challenge this type of board governance model at your own personal peril. But this isn't about me. Yeah, I couldn't take four more years of this type of governance. Seems after the election, I wasn't going to get the chance anyway. I waited to push for this governance change until after it announced openly I wouldn't be running again. I think I've made those up here so uncomfortable for so long. I think they're still missing the message because of the messenger. Did we have what was supposed to be a retreat for governance as they was pushing? Yes. But I guess my idea of a retreat is where we all work on something together. What we had was a meeting where the board chair, probably a consultation with Dr. Carlin, scheduled a series of people to lecture us on governance. And for the most part, it's been the same lecture we've had over and over. We did have just enough discussion at this last one, this after the lectures. We had enough discussion for me, I think, to be able to say, I'm not the only one up here incredibly frustrated. In fact, I heard a majority of those who sit on this board make a commitment to follow up after our governance lectures and do something. We were supposed to have another retreat. We were supposed to each send a list of five governance changes we each believed would make a difference for us. Then we were supposed to discuss our list of ideas to see if we could agree on a few things that would help relieve this incredible frustration and share some of the board governance. When I asked Alex some time back what I should do with my list of governance suggestions, he didn't remember discussing it at the retreat. He said he would talk to Laura and Dr. Carlin and get back to me. He never got back to me until this weekend. Y'all have had to sit here, meeting after meeting, watching me practically beg the board chairman for a retreat that the majority of the board said they wanted. I thought, maybe not so. I thought it was too late. I came here tonight thinking it was too late. We're about ready to lose three of us. Three of us who went through what I think is a dysfunction that comes from board governance. And we're going to be replaced by three people who probably have no idea how this really works up here. I think that's the insidious of it all, the insidiousness of it all. Yeah. Why would anyone who wants to make a fundamental change in the district try if they're paying attention to what happens in a case like mine? It doesn't feel good to sit up here with your heart racing a hundred miles an hour wondering how many personal relationships you're personally damaging. I didn't run because I was scared that four more years of this, I was going to become Leonard Hitz in four or five steps. I think there's some examples tonight of how this governance trouble can get even more dangerous. I voted tonight to re-up our two hundred dollars on the healthcare contingency fund. Tonight was our only option, but I don't think we could know it had to be our only option. To be clear and careful, despite the rumors that could come out of what I've been saying tonight and what I've been trying to say for a couple of years, I'm not advocating for a change in our healthcare plan. I'm just trying to get us to study the questions. Trying to get us to consider something the city has already chosen, the way the county has already chosen. After two years and countless meetings with Dr. Carlin, with members of the healthcare world, with the RoGo clinic owner, with Matt, Ellen, I didn't even get, I don't think, a heads up that, yeah, I don't know if we're really actually interested in doing this study. That's the way it came across to me. I didn't even know when I showed up here tonight if any people, anyone on this board was even aware of what I'm going to be talking about, about the healthcare. Did you even know? Did you know what, like, what exactly was I talking about? How can I spend two years? I followed the KASB model. I did what I was supposed to do. I didn't make a sneak about this, and no one knows I'm even out there asking questions. Tonight, we also approved a consent agenda for over five hundred thousand to replace the high school turf. We ought to replace the high school turf. For the first time, which I really appreciate, it was actually asked. Would anyone like that off the consent agenda? Because normally, you have to actually ask to get it off the consent agenda before we can show up. The first time I had something removed from the consent agenda, another board member said, I didn't even know we could do that. A lot of times, I just want stuff off the consent agenda because I think the questions that we have to ask about it are questions that the public deserves to hear. So often, don't we're encouraged to ask those questions before the board, behind votes? So we don't, I guess, catch somebody without having the information or we don't make someone look bad because they don't quite prepare for our questions. I'm going to get that, but I feel like consent agendas sometimes contain things that we really should be asking questions about. And there's, up till tonight, this subtle discouragement for asking to have it removed off the consent agenda at least for a while. I didn't even debate the value of the tariff yet for the high school, but I didn't debate the value of the tariff. I've been told that we're actually not as board members supposed to debate. I can't even wrap my head around that one. Someone at this table doesn't believe that we should actually even have debates, that we should listen, ask questions, and vote. If that's the way we are, how does the idea that might come from the minority have a chance to thrive into an idea that could be of the majority? Right? If we don't debate, if I don't have the opportunity or the chance because of governance to say things that are uncomfortable, how am I ever going to get any kind of school district or any of us to look at things a little bit different? How do you get people to look different if you don't get to present your ideas if you're a part of the minority? Governance gets in the way. I think at times, our desire to look better, to say the right thing, to not get hammered by the public gets in our way. And by the way, when you get hammered like Mr. Hitz, when you get in a comfortable enough appear like me, how are you going to get people to run for this? How are you ever going to have people who want to put themselves in the way of what happens when you sit up here and speak your mind? I wonder often if he actually did, deep down, even after the election, doesn't regret a lot of what happened. I'm getting sidetracked. A final thought. Just because I think I'm right doesn't make it true. I work a lot on that. I've worked and learned a lot about that from you guys. I've learned a lot of that. Too many painful ways. Just because I think I'm right doesn't make it true. There are a ton of talented people here. We actually, not actually, I've studied over and over. We have a really good support team here. But just because the people who disagree with me think they're right doesn't make that true either. And here's the really hard part. Are we closed to the idea of another because for them to be right means I have to be wrong? What is our move? Why do we disagree? Why do we govern like this? We don't have the governance to work out the disagreements that we have as highly intelligent people that all agree on one thing. We do care about the kids. And maybe two things we don't think we're right to. That's what governance does, it works that stuff out. But until it can be represented of all of the people who sit here on this, until it can represent all of us, these frustrations are going to come with the new board members too. I wish you guys. And I think, thankful for y'all, finally it works.
Mark?
Yes, sir. I don't have too much. Just, I think the band, we got to watch them at the case study, Central States. They competed, they got one. They were great. I think they competed last weekend as well, but I'm not sure where it turned out. I'm sure it's equally as good. Just wanted to take note of that. And then, I don't have too much else. I look forward to honoring the friends, the board members that I spent a lot of time with, that will be outgoing here pretty soon, and welcoming the new board members. I think we've had a great district. I'm just very, very proud of it. The more I learn about the districts, particularly six and eight. I'm proud of Ryan and the work of this board, and particularly this staff and our teachers, and of course, the support of the community and the facilities. You know, we sit there, we particularly thinking and talking about this stuff, see opportunities to improve. But when we turn around and we celebrate the successes, there is a lot to celebrate. And we just, you know, our efficiency of time together on the board meetings, we don't, not able to, I think, do justice. Hopefully, we can have communities and committees and we can celebrate together what we really do accomplish as an organization. And it comes right back to staff and leadership and then the involvement in the community and the community of Southwest Kansas. A lot of people look to this district for ideas and for guidance. And it should be that way. You know, I think we're the leaders of Southwest Kansas. Again, just a lot to be proud of. I just look forward to welcoming the new board members and continue that.
Thank you, Mark. As I reflect with Dr. Henning's comments, my past issue on the board for four years, I did, as I do now, sit on a highly effective board of seven different opinions. Not everybody agreed. There were some four-three votes. There wasn't, there was discussion. I don't remember a lot of debates. I don't know if that's part of our board government. I think, never, excuse me, I think our ability to sign up for the agenda meetings is up for everybody to do that. I've signed up for a few at the beginning, back then, to find out more, to ask for something to be put on the board. That's everybody's right to do that, to be heard or pull a topic off or put a topic on. And I've been in this position since July one. I don't have a lot of experience at this, but I do have experience of sitting and listening to six other board members that have a highly respected opinion, even comments, comments that have seen, comments that are had on the back. And I listen to every one of them. Since July one, I've been accused of dodging things. I've been sent nasty texts. I've been sent crappy emails, almost kind of a threatening deal that things will be disclosed if I don't set a board retreat. I don't appreciate that. As far as this board governance, I don't know when it started that for you. I wouldn't think it was when Laura got voted president. I don't know for sure. I know you didn't have a problem with board governance when Daniel was president. I went back and watched it. There were some issues with Mark. I was trying to find the root, the root of your issues to listen to board governance and the time. And then, once I found that time, then I can kind of help dig into and try to figure out the right retreat path. When I came on July, and I will not speak for Laura and what she did at her board retreat. I'll let her do that. When I came on to July one, we have some issues with this board, communication issues. I've sit and listened a lot to you, a lot. I think you're a very highly intelligent man. I think everybody on this board is very highly intelligent. But sometimes I take it as a maybe, belittle it. Or maybe I'm just not smart enough to get it. I think there's a couple of times that you put us in position. Talking to people you probably shouldn't be talking to or going to meeting with certain people that you shouldn't be meeting to without a board decision for one to do. I don't know all the particulars. I'm not here to kick their on anybody. I'm here to stand up for me. I'm a very passionate person about school, and I'm a very passionate person about students. And I'm a very passionate person to sit on this board. I'm highly honored to sit on this board. I'm very, I want to say depressed that I didn't get re-elected again, but I know there's three oncoming board members that are probably going to do a great job. I know there's four other board members that are still going to complete or continue to do a great job for our district. But board governance, after getting on July one, I talked to Laura. I asked Dr. Carlin, where are the notes from the other four or five board members that want to change board governance or change KASB? I know those people on this board, they don't like KASB at all, at all. And I remember having her board retreat. You were gone the first half for those two presentations. And you got off, and I understand it might have been a timing issue that you were traveling. And some people got off at half of it. We tried to have a board retreat on board governance. And James Clifford, thankfully she showed up. I think she did a wonderful job and as in, for. And Jeanne Clifford, thankfully she showed up. I, I think she did a wonderful job and as a facilitator of that. I wanna have a board governance, or, excuse me, a board retreat. I wanna talk about board governance, but I want it to be everybody included in on it and everybody have a chance for that discussion and not be dominated. I haven't heard anything out of any other board member to talk about the board governance, therefore I pushed this retreat. I've had one other person contact me this weekend and ask if we can have the meeting on, I believe, December 16, be extended to have that board retreat. And I always thought payables, a 15-minute meeting was 15-minute meeting, plus the holiday. We might be running out of time. We have a lot to get through. We have board attorney, we have Dr. Carlin's evaluation, we have, we, we have three oncoming board members. There's a lot to discuss before the end of the year. There's a lot on our plate. Uh, I believe, are, all of our plates. But I, I wanna have this board retreat. We're gonna set the time, I think, December 16. I think it's a great time for us to do that. I wanna invite the new three board members to be there, to have, to be a part of that discussion. But I have not even seen five things from you on what you wanna talk about. We also need to be careful. The four or five things that we have between six or seven board members, it's 35 things. Maybe some of those things are parallel with each other. We agree on. But if we start talking about board governance in a different manner or having tweets, it's not KASB that we're following. It's something different. It's something that we're trying to come up with and then turn it over to three brand new board members to try to figure out. I've never had an issue with KASB. I enjoyed it 2012 to 2016. I followed the model. I listened, I asked clarifying questions, I went through the board orientation. But I knew one thing that I could think independently on a board. And my voice counted to a point. I don't disagree with some of the things you're saying. But I disagree with a lot of things that have to do with me and the way I act. So if I can get three other people or two other people, because I'm gonna count you as board retreat, that get four, then we get four to say, have a consensus that we want a board retreat December 16, to extend that, then we'll give time and make that decision. I don't know if, I don't think we need to make a motion for it. I think it's just a consensus, right? So I'm in favor of having a board retreat December 16, or, yeah, December 16, after, to extend our meeting?
I would say that we would need a facilitator to do it, and I would suggest that you contact an independent person to do that and check their availability.
I will take that into consideration, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, um, you mentioned that you hadn't heard from any of you other board members about a board retreat, and I guess the, I'm apologizing in that sense because it was my understanding of the last board retreat that we had planned to have one, so I didn't feel like that, maybe I didn't need to follow up on that because I thought that we would be hearing about it, so.
And that, and to, to clarify, I was hoping that, from what Dr. Hanigan said, that there was several other board members that have three, four, or five issues with board governance that were gonna contact the previous president or the current president with those issues so we can build a board retreat around that.
And, and it may come from board governance and it may be a retreat where we need to discuss it, but I also think it needs to include, part of the issue comes from trust within the board and the administration, which may come from not using the proper board governance. I'm not sure of that, so I don't know. I wasn't in the position or have the knowledge to say, these are my five issues with board governance because I need to learn more to understand other types of governance. Does that make sense? So I was struggling with coming up with five specific things. I mean, maybe trust would be one of them. I'm not sure. I would be in favor of a board retreat if that can help move our district forward because that's my long-term goal, is to do what's best for the district, which is best for our kids and teachers, so. I tend to speak up when I shouldn't and not speak up when I should, so.
So that's three. You're the fourth? You would be number, to have a board retreat? So the consensus is that December 16 will have a board retreat? And I'll alert Dr. Carlin or let him know the facilitator, my choice, to have that board retreat and the discussion, so. Please bring, bring anything that you would like to discuss there. And we'll get it taken care of.
Did you want the five suggestions?
Do you want me to do those five suggestions that'll help make me, or help with the decision or the facilitator I wanna do?
The five governance, the five suggestions towards governance itself is right.
Yeah, do I want to listen now?
No.
No, I'm sorry.
I have my five. I asked some time ago what I should do with them. I'm asking again, do you want me to sing it?
Yes, please do. And now, help me with the other suggestions from the other board members. Help me pick the right facilitator that will hopefully touch on everybody's questions or concerns. Uh, Dr. Carlin, I'm sorry, comments, violation?
Sure, um, first, the, I got to attend a little bit of the KASB thing. I shortened my trip to attend Representative Jamie's funeral. Our state lost a really good man. The family lost a great father. The contributions that he made for supporting public education over the last, at least 10 years, he's, he's going to be missed, so, um, and it was a really nice event. Thanks to Michael Bunch and Laura for presenting, showcasing Garden City with our Crystal Apple program. Not surprised to hear that Pratt wants to replicate it, and I think we'll hear more, more that will wanna do that. That's something regularly I hear from super tenants who are jealous about, how we in our community select our outstanding teachers for recognition. Thanks again to the city for the use of this great facility. Our project at the ESC seems to be going along pretty well. You've probably noticed Stephanie's got a little smile on her face because it looks like we might get to get back into, into our space later this week. Others in the room give to look forward to vacating their space while improvements are made. But the, the work has been, has been progressing, I think, on schedule. Really, a huge thanks to everybody. This isn't easy work. There are frustrations that go along with, with service on the board. But we can never lose practice of the, never lose sight of the fact that we have an amazing community, amazing school district. We get to serve some wonderful families and, and kids. So with all the frustrations, please don't dwell on that, but dwell on the important work that we do and the, you know, the positive achievements. We're doing great reports tonight. That's some promising information. And, and seeing that, I hope, gives us awesome satisfaction, so thanks.
A little more comment. Congratulations, Jackie, on the election. And congratulations for getting rid of the air mic or stuff. I think I totally had the text earlier, so. The next board meeting of education will take place on Monday, December 1st. I thought I stopped on that. Thanks, Roy. Anyway, the next meeting on the Board of Education will take place on Monday, December 6, 2021, at 6:00 P.M. In the City Commission Chamber at the Admin Center. We, we need to go into executive session to talk about personnel, personnel management, non-elected personnel. How much time do we need? That's all. An hour? So does anybody need a break before we go into executive session?
Yes.
So, 15 minutes, all right, ten?
Five, I'm fine.
Okay, perfect. So I would like to make, sit here a motion to go into executive session in under five.
Mr. President, I think we go into executive session for 60 minutes, beginning at 9:05 to discuss individual employees' performance pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under COLA. I already started at 9:05, and the open meeting will resume in the board meeting room at 10:05. Excuse me, at the City Commission.
Second, Mr. Melar. Second by Dana. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?